All right, we have Cory Stormburner. I know, I can't read it this month.
Stoneburner.
Stoneburner. Beth from Ink Free News, Carol Anders from Post and Mail, and Teresa Carano from Tribune News. Thank you all for being here this evening. And now we're going to the presentation of Student of the Month. So from Pearson Elementary, we have Adriana Minica. I will list that completely. Did you say she's? Yeah.
All right. Well, I nominated, Adriana is in my current classroom, and I nominated her because she is just a joy to have in class. She's a great friend to everybody. If we're doing something, if I have somebody that I know may have trouble working with others, I can put Adriana in her group and she'll help that person work hard. So she brings out the best in others and in herself. So she's just a real joy to have in class. So I'm so glad that I can share with Adriana.
Next up from South Whitley, we have Norman Schwartz.
Well, I believe they are on their way.
Oh.
So I'm sorry that he misses that.
That's good.
If you don't mind, she had said she was almost here.
Okay, okay, we'll hold off. Okay, so next we have Hannah Thomas. She is from the Wicco Junior Senior High. Looks like the...
What class are you in? Are you junior, grade or what?
Seventh.
So seventh grade, so junior high.
I'm sure. Jake.
Hi Hannah. So Hannah is a quiet student, but does her work with excellence. Hannah was nominated by the seventh grade staff. I had the privilege of calling home Hannah, leaving a wonderful message to your parents just about the exciting things that you do at school. I know you're not always the most boisterous of the students, but that's okay. You do everything right that we want our students to do. You're an exemplary student. That's why you've been nominated and selected for this. That's a really big accomplishment. You should be proud of it, okay?
Next up from the senior high school is one of my favorite junior students, Nick Meadows. I hope his face is ready for us.
So I chose Nick the Student of the Month because he has shown so much growth and maturity since I had him in class last year. He has taken on many leadership roles in school, especially as the junior class president and council. He brings forth many new ideas for Wicco. He provides thoughtful questions and discussions in the classroom, as well as advocates for himself and others. He is a joy to have in class.
We can wait still.
We'll wait.
We can wait.
If we know they're on his way, I'll wait. We can have them do the presentation and maybe he'll be there then, yeah. So next up, we have a special presentation from the Pearson Elementary School titled Houses.
We're gonna go ahead and play a short video for you first, and then I'll call some teachers up front here. Thank you. We have some great ways and fun ways for the kids to actually remember kind of their words. We have symbol, kind of like a hand symbol when they pass each other in the hallway. And so you would see some of that in the video. So hopefully we can get that going. But while they're working on that a little bit, I'm gonna have our house leaders come up front. These are teachers that are the leaders of the different houses. And I'm gonna let them reenact the video. No, just kidding. But if you could just say your house, what your character trait is, and anything else you'd like to share about what you've seen so far with the house system. So something else the video would have shown you is that all students were sorted into houses. The only house we're missing is the Purple House. Our Purple House leader is homesick today, so she was unable to come. But the rest of the houses are up here. So all kids are a member of one of these houses. So I'll turn it over and just...
We are Orange. We are Orenzia. It is the character trait Friendship. I would like to share actually what Mrs. Spiker and I were just talking about. We sorted, we met our kids. It was a really quick first meeting. We have a gesture. Ours is a dolphin, and we do this. And then we go behind, and we slap a high five. And one of her students wanted to see every adult because he was looking for someone who was in his orange house so he could do this too. I had no idea. So I'm walking in the hall, and he's going like this. And I was like, "Oh, hey, how's it going?" I had no idea that this was... "Oh, wait, oh, I got it." And then I understood what on earth he was doing. So he wanted to find somebody so he could do his house sign. So he was very excited. So the kids are really bought into it, and they're really enjoying finding their people that aren't their regular teachers in the hallway and passing.
I'm Empatia, Blue House. Our hand signal is sign language for empathy, which is our character trait. And our animal is an elephant because elephants are one of the animals that will show empathy.
I'm the house leader of Tika, and ours is Integrity. And ours is the sign of the Eagle. And we had a great, unfortunately, wonderful time this last time. One of our students unfortunately was in a severe accident. And so we happened to have a kind of a basket that we got full of wonderful goodies and things. And then we made this huge card for him, a gift card. And we took it to him because he's still in hospital. And his little sister, who's also in a house, stopped by today and it just brought tears to my eyes because she said, "We had gifts and everything in the basket." And she said, "You know, the thing that he liked the most was this extra-large card with every single person's signature from the house." And that was the thing that meant the most to him while he's in the hospital was knowing that his house needs this wonderful card for him. And so I think that's one of the things that this house system is so important is because it's making our children feel like they have a family here at school and that they have an important place here and that no matter whether they're in kindergarten or sixth grade, they have a home. That's one of the important things that we want them to feel.
I'm the leader of Mahalo. We are Green, and Mahalo is White for Respect, our sign. And we go through the halls to sign and greet each other with the A-Ten sign. So kind of go a little bit off with Suzie. So Suzie, myself, and Jasmine, who are the leader of Purple House, we attended a conference this last summer that introduced us to the house system. And we brought it back to Mrs. Smith and said, "We wanna do this. How do we do it? How do we make it happen?" And so our goals are to use the house system to create that sense of family for the kids, togetherness all through the grades level, K through 6. We started off with sorting them into houses where everyone got a colored bracelet made. We had a bag, and they got to take a bag. And it was just random which house they were sorted in, just kind of like a Harry Potter theme. After sorting, we had our initial house meeting where we taught the students their sign. Eventually, every house will have a chant and a house crest. Once students are sorted into a house, they stay in the house for the entire time until they're at Pearson Elementary. And as they go into the higher grades, fourth, fifth, and sixth, they have an opportunity. That's where we choose our ambassadors. Each house has six ambassadors, two from fourth, two from fifth, two from sixth. This year, the house leaders chose the ambassadors. We may alter that in the future a little bit, but right now we have the house leaders choosing them. Our goal with it is to represent the pillars of the friendship and kind of like the lifelines and to teach the kids those lifelines and the importance of that for the community and family here at the school.
Hi, my house is Onsvar, which is Norwegian for responsibility. And if you couldn't guess, we're yellow. I...we had been working on the chant at this last meeting that we had last Friday. And I had wondered, you know, do they really understand what responsibility is and how that can fit into the community? And it was wild. They came up with all kinds of chants. We get to vote on them next time. They're all very excited. The other thing I wanted to say is about the ambassadors. So before our last house meeting Friday, one of our chosen ambassadors came up to me. He said, "I'm a member of the House." And I said, "Just go, just go." And he's like, "No, I'm not that person." And then he came back and he was so excited. He's like, "Oh, yeah, I can do this. I'm a ambassador." So, yeah, it was awesome.
And I just wanna get a little audience participation here. What house are you in?
Onsvar.
So she's in Onsvar. Do you know the sign for Onsvar? What is it? Can you show us? Yeah, very good. I hope you could see that. Yeah, awesome, thank you. Any luck? Okay.
Need this? I'll count you down. This is serious stuff.
In three, two, one, play.
Welcome to the Tika House! Tika means integrity. Tika is bold. We are fearless. We display trust and honesty. We are the Eagles! We are the Blue House! Empatia! Empatia is Italian for empathy. Empathy is the ability to understand other people's feelings.
Our sign is feelings and sign language. And our open, our hand goes to open, so empathy.
Welcome to Onsvar House. Onsvar is Norwegian for responsibility. We practice responsibility at school, on the bus, and at home. Our color is yellow, and our meaningful symbol is the E.
Welcome to Mahalo. We are proudly display our A-Ten sign, and we're easygoing, patient, and wise, just like our friends at the journal. We have a lot of wisdom, knowledge, power, instill. We respect our teachers, our students, and ourselves. To Tumao, house!
To Tumao is a moment for perseverance. Perseverance in easy times, perseverance in difficult times, perseverance even in things we don't wanna do. When we meet, we proudly display the swimming W sign. And that reminds us to keep on swimming even when things get hard.
Dolphins, fish and pigeons. Your best is everything. We'll open the door to be your friend. By hand, we will always land. Orenzia!
So that's our, that's been our houses. We're just getting started, so you'll hear more in the next semester and going into next year.
Thank you. At this time, if you were here for one of our special presentations and you'd like to head out, you are free to do so. Thanks for coming. Bye Nick.
Bye Nick.
Okay, so we'll start with 3.0 on our agenda. Approval of minutes. We have the length of the minutes of the November 18th regular session and the December 12th work session. We can certainly review those if there are any requests. And if not, I would ask for a motion, a second, and a vote.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Still moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes.
Thank you. Next up, we have department reports and building reports. And let's start with Mrs. Smith, Pearson.
Well, I'm not gonna go into a whole lot of detail. I'm just gonna highlight a couple things. We have our spelling bee coming up on Wednesday. So our classroom members are really excited to compete in the school spelling bee Wednesday at 1:30 here in Pearson. And also, one more thing I wanted to follow up on. I remember we talking about the sixth grader who had a Genius Hour project, collecting winter donation, winter items. She was able to collect 40 bags of items during that whole drive. The kids were really excited about it. And of course, we're really proud of Reese Bays who did that project. And that's just one example of a Genius Hour project that our students are doing.
Thank you. Ms. Rambler.
Just wanted to say that we turned back to the Thanksgiving break. We began our annual canned food non-perishable drive. And again, talking about like the houses, we also do lifelines in South Whitley. And December was caring. And glad to say that we set a new record. We collected 2,172 items. And all of those were delivered to the South Whitley Food Bank. And the winning class was Mrs. Schwartz's kindergarten class. So they had the pizza prize. So they were all excited. Our students are finishing up the winter math testing. I think that is this Friday. After break, we'll post those scores for our staff and our professional development group. And we'll use that to review and help the students move things. And the next window for that will begin in spring, May, starting May 4. And I just wanna say, I don't wanna steal Mr. Edward's thunder, but tomorrow is the band holiday concert. And our sixth graders are ready to perform again. I'm sorry, Mr. Edward, I appreciate you. But this is their first year of performing, something like this. And they're always excited to see everybody in the audience. And it's a packed house. And so I think that starts at 7 o'clock. But they have dinner before that from 5:30 to 6:30. But I just wanted to say that tomorrow night, our sixth grader will perform in the venue.
Thank you. Ms. William.
Just gonna go over some highlights from what we've got coming up that we've already completed. A big one this past month was the Home Life Bar, mental health initiative, following that. We, the mental health therapists in the district, we met and started to gather some framework and some ideas on how we can not just help our students, but help our teachers with some wellbeing, some wellness. A lot of ideas that I think are gonna be very successful if we consider that, that we're really looking forward to seeing progress. Second, this is kind of something I'm really interested to see how the training goes. But tomorrow, we actually have secondary specialization. Teachers will be receiving training from the Indiana University Institute of Disability and Community at the high school. And this will involve training related to transitions for our secondary teachers. We haven't done it here before. And so we're very fortunate to have this team coming up from Indiana University. I'm really excited to see what kind of knowledge that they're gonna make to our teachers and then also see how our teachers are gonna use that knowledge in the future. As Ms. Rambler touched on, we are almost done with MBEA testing. Nice that winter retesting server was closed. And it'll be nice to have MBEA when it closes and get all of the scores done. We have that data available. And just finally, we're deep into completing multiple and a year financial reports for various science and stuff like that. We're remaining... In a nutshell.
Thank you. Mr. Brumball. Could be back on schedule talking to you before 5 o'clock these days.
The only thing I have is that we continue to review safety with school buses and stuff like that. Something that's come to my attention since the after-school athletic shuttle. And in particular, here at Pearson, the scouts that they were making on St. April 13. As you know, it gets dark at 5:15, 5:30. Not to defend any motorists out there, but they're disregarding our houses. They're not expecting the school bus to be stopped on the highway at 6:15 unloading students. So the fact that January 6th, we come back from Christmas break, the only stop the shuttle will make is right here at Pearson Elementary and Parking. That will eliminate any, anybody that just randomly drives to stop timing the school bus and keep our students safe. I know this is my cause, it's slightly convenient, but the bit of effect, no other stops in that shuttle.
How many stops do we, does it normally make on the...
It depends on who's on the bus.
But I mean, like, are we talking four, 10?
Two or three. We have things through there. And we'll just, we'll look at it again and see if there's something we can maybe do to get to the students home. I would feel better, and I think everybody would feel better if they were safe and here for unloading and unloading. And we'll continue to be, so it'll be something different.
Thank you.
And Mr. Lewis.
How are you guys? It looks like I've been up on my head in a rough day. I could've used some houses today, for sure. On Sundays, I leave Jeffersonville, the Louisville area, about 3:30 in the morning. And I get here at work. And then I take a day, get right back. I do 3:30 in the morning again on Wednesday and finish my week. And today, it was nice until about an hour before Indianapolis. And I got here about 1 o'clock. And so it's been rough. And I had my Purdue sweatshirt on.
Oh, that's really rough.
That I'm prepared to travel in. And I, you know, I was gonna wear it out here. Terrible last night. I had drilled, so Nebraska, you know, gave it to them. So I changed my wigs, scratched my face. Anyhow, with that said, lots of great things I have had a chance to be a part of since I got here. The Career Academy, I think, will be much more than maybe you would envision if it plays out like I think it can. I started, spent probably the first three weeks, I would say, spinning my wheels, maybe wasting time that sometimes takes steps backwards before you move forwards because I needed to find out more about putting the project together, listening to Dr. Penrod, getting to know the community and long story short, the alignment of the high school and the Career Academy. And then hopefully, a year from now, if we mix in the junior high even more and elementary, it's a collaborative effort across the board to have it not only just be a Career Academy that gives some skill training in different areas, but also provides, you know, a guarantee that students' check buckets for graduation are exposed to different opportunities given choices. And I've been all over and learned more about CTE training than I could've ever imagined. And I believe that I started to put together with the help of the high school staff and Dr. Penrod, what I think will be probably a more formal presentation next time, after we've been able to talk about, again, just the direction of where the curriculum, once the curriculum, we figure out, you know, how that looks and transpires, then you start plugging in the fun stuff, the things that everybody wants to see. You know, the machinery, the, hopefully, if we have some healthcare services, you know, a lab, you know, that will be, in my opinion, state-of-the-art and barbie connects with us like I think they will, and so on and so forth. So it's been a really fantastic opportunity for me. I dove into it, you know, with my head first. And again, it's, you know, it's kinda like a state championship. You know, if you coach in or anybody's competitive, you're working, you know, always to be the best. And that's what I want this to, you know, to, again, collaboratively work with everything to have happen. And just one other thing, I'll be quiet, but the agriculture program, I've learned a lot about that since I started getting into, you know, just what was maybe the right, again, pathways and things to offer across the board. And with speaking to many people, you know, I hope that's a state championship product that, again, comes out of this. Not only great education, it's a pathway. It's a profession that lots of things could come out of, you know, what they're doing throughout their years at the Wicco System Academy added to it. But I think we can add a lot of things with that facility out there to even expand that one program even more. So hopefully, next time, I'll give you a little bit more of a dated thing. I can tell you what I think's gonna happen. But after we get back from Christmas, I think we'll have some more specific, concrete dates that'll check off on certain things. Did you have any questions about it?
I will say that Karen Coon says all smiles when she talks about what could be out there at the academy.
Well, I've told her, you know, her general manager. You know what I mean? She can be the head coach and tell me what you need. You know, you need some players, you know, you need some animals, you need some varnish, you know, what can we do? And we'll find a way to do it, hopefully. And again, I think, you know, with the program, with the classes and the curriculum and all the pathways that go on and on, that's part of it. But there's so much you can do with that program, just multi-dimensional, cross-curricular, that can really, I think, put out a fantastic product. Fantastic product that will make us very proud.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have an IU sweatshirt you could wear home if you needed something to go.
I'm not that, I'm not feeling that.
Okay. Stop, Ryan. No, thank you for the update.
My heart's in our knee, so I might have to...
Oh, sit down.
If they keep playing like they're playing, I might have to break.
Ms. Rambler.
So like the other schools, we also conducted our canned food and money donation drive recently ended. Our senior class more than doubled up their competition, the next closest competition, which was the staff. So far, they had well over a thousand links in our hallways. Each link signifies either a donated item or donated money, and all of that money, and food is donated to the local food bank. So they're down the main hall, they went down the main hall of the ramp and almost around all of Abingdon on their chain, so they, they did a fantastic job. Also, we'll get a pizza party in the media center as their prize. Second thing to highlight is just the PD day on, on, on the second. That was another wonderful opportunity that our staff had to dive back into their hierarchy standards, creating assessments, creating structural calendars, creating a way to track all of that. I just appreciate the work that our staff does each of the two days we've had so far and all the other asks that I've, that I've asked them to do. I really do appreciate it. They made my first semester as an administrator. Really, I cherish it, and I appreciate everything they do for me, because it's, it's not just, not just my work, it's their work too. And the winter banquet concert, yes, is on the 7th, and Mr. Emmer did talk about it as well. Thank you.
Okay, superintendent's update. We did a lot of superintendent update at the work session, just kind of close out the calendar year. But again, we get attendance on December 12th, the same that we reported on the 12th. And then we do have a donation to add, the Feed the Children donated 248 pounds of school supplies and children's books with a total value of just over $2,400, $2,418.31. And if, we get a form every so often from the Feed the Children, they put, and they put the weight of things down. So I'm not, I'm not sure the form, how they get to the amount, but certainly we appreciate it, because that's, that's a lot of money that they donate to us. Any, any questions for me from superintendent's report or update? If not, the business reports are the same we, same we did at, on the 12th at the work session, and so we will, unless there are any further questions, we'll skip those tonight. Nothing changed. We, we reported, on Thursday, we reported on year end or month end of November, and obviously, nothing's changed since then.
I don't have any public comments unless, okay, like we can move on.
So we, next, we have the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda shown in items 7.1 through 7.3? And if not, I would ask for a motion and a second, and then a vote after that.
If there are no items to be removed, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, passes.
Thank you. Next, we have personnel under 7.4. We have two discontinuations, a couple of employment actions, and a couple of change in positions. And yeah, if we, I'd be glad to answer questions. If not, I would ask for a motion and a second.
Do I have a motion and a second to approve the personnel changes as presented in 7.4?
So moved. Second.
Person's second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, passes.
Old business, nothing at this time. New business, 9.1, we have a review of field trips. The field trip report is presented there on, in that link, and if we have questions, be glad to answer those and talk about that. If not, we'd ask for a motion, second, and a vote.
Do I have a motion to approve the field trip report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a first and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, passes.
Okay, the next one is a resolution authorizing the treasurer of Whittaker Community Schools to pay invoices, transfer appropriation, and transfer interest earned to the, for the operations fund to the education fund in 20-year, sorry, 2019 calendar year. So I mentioned this briefly in, in our work session. So this is our last, last meeting of the year, and so we will have bills or invoices that we need to pay prior to the next time the board meets, and so this gives us the authority to pay those bills and also to transfer appropriation as necessary, as well as any funds that may be necessary to finish out the year on December 31st.
Do I have a?
Yeah, motion, second.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution to authorize transfers?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, passes.
The other one we mentioned on, or one of the others we mentioned on Thursday. Permission is sought to purchase three buses, a mini, a 78 passenger and 81 passenger, through Curlin Bus Sales. We went through the, we went through the public purchasing process, and it came from a QPA, quantity purchasing agreement. Sorry, 21, 281, sorry, 281s, and so we'll explain that in a second. The, so the quantity purchasing agreement, Curlin got the, got the quote, and so we'd like to purchase those three through their business. The buses were placed, three buses on our current fleet, which have met the 12-year maximum allowance. The part to explain then is the, we have, this is kind of, this kind of has two checks on it, two checks and balances. There's a bus replacement plan that we have to follow, and then it's also budgeted, and so we can't go over budget on buses, and then we also can't deviate from the plan. So for instance, if we had enough money, like $300,000 can buy three buses. If it could buy four, we couldn't, because we said we were only buying three. So there are kind of two checks and balances on this particular one, so. I'd be glad to answer any questions on that one. This is pretty typical as far as bus purchases, and then we also, I think you said they're out seven months, correct? So if we order tomorrow, be. Six months, okay. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, and if not, just need a motion, second, and a vote.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of the three buses as presented?
So moved. Second.
Hearing a first and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, passes.
One thing I would mention, just real quick, doesn't have anything to do with the actual purchase, but, you know, a few years ago, the buses got moved to, to 12-year rotations instead of 10, and I think it's a testament to our transportation department, the maintenance and upkeep of those that now last 12 years instead of 10, because they're basically the same, they are the same buses that used to, according to our laws, last 10, and now they're up to 12. So that's extra, extra time, extra care, extra maintenance on behalf, on behalf of the transportation department, and so that's appreciated. The next one is, we mentioned this on Thursday as well, authorization to enter into an agreement with Marion University. And this is the residency agreement with Marion that we mentioned. Kind of falls along the same lines of the, to a certain extent, the Career Academy. Our Career Academy will train students to enter the workforce, and we got to thinking one day, who will train our teachers? So they can enter our workforce here at school, already, already trained on our rubric, our NIET rubric, and, and they can hit the door the first day and understand that. So as we were talking to some people, Marion University uses that, they're out of Indianapolis, and they were looking for a partner in this area. And so they came to, I mentioned this Thursday, they came to our school a few weeks ago now, I guess, and Mr. Emmert was teaching a lesson through a virtual classroom on the computer, so really kind of cool. The, he was talking about colors that day, and he had on a blue shirt. One of the students on the computer said, I like your blue shirt, or something like that. It was very, very interactive, but it also, that allows, it's their learning lab, and that allows them to put pre-service teachers in front of virtual classrooms prior to, prior to even student teaching, and so right from the beginning of their college career, they start getting these types of experiences. And then for those of us who did not go through that experience when we were in college, it's a little more nerve-wracking when you're in front of a class of 25 kids for the first time as a student teacher, and the idea is that this will kind of, kind of alleviate a little bit of that anxiety. So, so they would be, they would come to us with bachelor's degrees, and they, but they would be earning their master's degree through Marion during that fifth year, which they would teach with us during that fifth year, so. So again, pretty excited about that. Just so, Goshen does this as well, and it just so happened that Marion was looking for somebody more on the northeast side of the state, and so we got to talk with them, and they said they would certainly be interested in us doing that. Said it sounds like we had a lot of out-of-the-box type of stuff going on, and that's what they were looking for as well, a partner. So if there are any questions, again, I'd be glad to answer. If not, just ask for a first, second, a motion, a second, and a vote.
We are seeking permission to enter into clinical residency agreement with Marion University. Do I have a motion to approve the agreement with Marion University as presented?
So moved. Second.
Hearing a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, passes.
Thank you. And then, yes, you look, if you see today, the, this just happened this morning, we met with our, we were supposed to meet at 10 o'clock from, with a food service auditor from the Department of Education, and she was, she was delayed a little bit because of the weather. Not quite as much as Mr. Lewis, but she wasn't coming from as far either. And so we met at 11 o'clock, and she was trying to get done with her audit in three days, so she was, she hit, she hit our books pretty hard today. One of the things she found right away was that we need to increase the price of our special milk. This is not the milk that goes with the school lunch. This is if, I believe this is if they go toward, or go up and get an extra milk. And so her recommendation to avoid, to avoid any further, I guess, discontent with the DOE is to increase this on, on January 1, 2020. So if we, when we come back from winter break, this will be an increase, again, only on extra lunch, not on, not on the milk that comes with the lunch. And had we, had we known this, I'd certainly got this to us on the packet, but it happened literally at probably noon, maybe somewhere around there today. So since the board's not going to meet again before December or January 1, I would appreciate being added to that and then getting a motion, a second, and a vote. But certainly, since that's new, I'm glad to discuss. Anything else?
How much, how much did it go up to?
It's going up five cents. What is the cost?
It's current, you know. I can't remember. I thought 30 or 35, but I can't.
For an extra milk?
Yeah.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the increase of five cents for an extra milk in each school building starting January 1, 2020? Should that be 2020? Yes, for 2020.
So moved.
Second. Hearing a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, passes.
Thank you. Okay, miscellaneous administrative items, 10.1, interview, financial process update. So we kind of discussed that under the transfer resolution, so this will just allow us to pay our bills, transfer money as necessary, and transfer appropriation as necessary, and as well as transfer any interest earned from our operations fund back into education fund as, as necessary. So that's kind of how that would work these next couple of weeks, and then we'll come back in January and report what we, what we had to do to get to the end of the year. We mentioned this Thursday as well, we'll be, we'll be hosting a special session of the Board of School Trustees prior to the 15th of January for reorganization, as well as the annual financial meeting. I believe we kind of looked at the 6th of January at 4 o'clock at Larwell. And so if everybody's still okay with that, I know we kind of discussed that Thursday. If anything changed in those last couple of days, let, let me know, and if not, we'll, we'll consider the 4th, or sorry, the 6th at 4 at Larwell for our reorganization meeting. And tomorrow. I think this might be the third time.
I was going to say, and again, the band concert.
We are all cordially invited to join us tomorrow at our band program's annual Christmas concert. We'll be serving dinner, which is ham, green beans, scallop, potatoes, salad, and baked goods for $5 per plate from 5:30 to 6:30 in the high school cafeteria. And then the concert begins at 7:00 PM. Come celebrate the holidays with our incredibly talented student musicians.
All right. Next is miscellaneous board meeting, or board items, upcoming meetings, other than January 6th at 4:00 PM. We have January 16th is our board work session, I believe will be at Larwell. And January 20th, 2020, will be our regular board session, also at Larwell at this point. So with that, I would, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a first and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, passes. That was the most boring.
So moved.
Thank you all for coming out to Pearson, and Merry Christmas.